Say I'll be awake, but I'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Julie, I'm ready. All right, we've got our, everybody got their computer where they wanted? Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and would you please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. There we go. All right, well, at this time, do we have any folks who would care to share a public comment? Public comment period? No one today? Then we move on to our board agenda. Everyone had a chance to look at our agenda for today. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any changes needed for our agenda for today? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved our agenda. Taking a look at our last board minutes.
I'll move the minutes, Madam Chair.
All right, we have a motion to accept our minutes. Do I hear a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, any discussion? None of the minutes from October nineteenth. Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Okay, Brian's representative is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chief Deputy Becky Howell on behalf of Sheriff Brian Cruz.
Okay.
Um, we are here this morning, um, requesting, um, employment, employment status changes for part-time dispatcher Carrie Danielson to full-time dispatch position, um, effective November fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And her pay rate, um, would be the same, which is level B twenty-two, step six, um, twenty-three eighty per hour.
Madam Chair, move to approve the change of part-time status to full-time status for dispatcher Carrie Danielson effective November fifth, twenty twenty-one at level B twenty-two, step six, twenty-three eighty an hour.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Any discussion?
So was she working like twenty hours a week, if you know, I mean, does that, does that change benefits or was she already getting them?
Well, yes, she would receive full-time benefits now. She had been at part-time. She'd previously worked in the.
Oh, okay.
And so she went to part-time status and then now she's moving back to full-time.
Good, thank you.
Any additional questions? Discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to our second approved of hiring of a part-time deputy Chandler Tice. Um, he would be at level nine D, step one, which is twenty-five eighty-eight per hour, effective November third, two thousand.
Madam Chair, I move to approve hiring of Chandler Tice as part-time deputy effective November third, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
All right, is there any discussion?
Is there a chance that sometime in the future this individual would be full-time?
There is a possibility if we have staffing changes. We'd obviously go through the normal hiring process for that.
So is this kind of an on-call? You have like a list of folks and you call them in as needed?
We do fulfill shifts to cover vacations, sick calls.
Do they receive benefits then too?
They do not receive benefits. They receive, um, appropriated, um, vacation and sick.
And I think, Madam Chair, this list used to be quite lengthy and then it was people that wouldn't come in, so I think over time, uh, the sheriff has kind of just kept people on that actually, am I right?
Yeah, the list did tend to be longer years ago, but, um.
People that worked one shift a year.
Different changes and, you know, people are not seeking to do that in part-time status.
Sure, sure. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then moving on to, um, requesting approval to hire a part-time correction officer Joshua Frank. He would be at level B twenty-two, step one, at twenty fifty-three per hour, per hour, um, pending, um, successful completion of his exams.
Madam Chair, move to approve hiring of Joshua Frank as a part-time corrections officer, level B twenty-two, step one, twenty fifty-three per hour, effective November fifth, twenty twenty-one, pending physical and psychological examinations.
I think it's November fifteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's Frank, not Frank. I'll second it. I'll second that, Madam Chair. Sorry, Paul.
That's okay. So we have a motion for Joshua Frank on November fifteen. Do I hear a second?
Already seconded.
It, we have, we have.
Steve, sorry.
Someone, that sarcasm with the second.
I missed that part. Any questions or discussion?
So is this one of the areas that we've been shorting for a long time?
We are short, we've been advertising since August and we still don't have any applications for full-time correctional.
I know, and this fellow doesn't want full-time, just part-time?
No, because he's attending school.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to, um, requesting change in some of the appointments to the Central Minnesota Emergency Services Board committees with, um, Randy Seeland's retirement. Get those positions filled, so.
Kidding.
Providing authority with, um, the documents and requesting that those be signed so that we have representation on that board.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the appointment of Sheriff's Office staff to Central Emergency Services Board Regional Advisory Committee.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Yeah. Greg? Good morning.
Morning. Greg Schultz, land use director, assuming I just got one item, chip solar pub thirty-seven to one megawatt, solar farm, conditional use permit one five five oh six, and it's a one-year extension request. This is DeGroot property, located section twenty-one, township one twenty, range thirty-two in Sweet Grove Township, proposal one six zero one, six zero zero one. So if you remember back in June, we had a similar extension. This is both due to XL Energy not agreeing to hooking up at this point on the grid. Extension. Similar to what the viewers did and asked for an extension in June. So interconnection agreement issues.
Make a motion to approve the extension.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
I just, just a comment. Yeah, these one megawatts, basically between the federal government and XL, there's been a, I think the federal government changed the requirement, so XL had to go reevaluate every site that was in the works, kind of pushing everything back. That's kind of the reasoning behind the whole thing.
Now, is this an actual, they call it a solar farm? Is this a large, they're, they're going to offer, um, energy to XL? This isn't just a family farm wanting.
Going to the XL grid.
Okay.
There's a grid that goes along there, County State Ed twenty-five runs along there. So there's three proposed along that corridor there, and that's a rural city sites. Two of them have been held up through the interconnection agreement right process right now. Um, I imagine the next one will be loss or extension as well. But, uh, these are all feeding the XL grid.
Uh, Greg, did we ever, uh, did you guys ever pass anything as far as a setback from other land that we had talked about?
Not yet. It should be coming up next month.
Okay, next month.
On the agenda.
Okay.
So what we're proposing is seven hundred and fifty feet from a residence and a thousand feet from municipalities. So.
So this XL, um, reevaluation, is there a chance that these gardens may not move forward?
They may not. If they can't get that agreement.
Okay.
I think it's all XL's hands.
It's, it's recertifying the site. So that site had to be recent, it's gonna have to be re, if it still meets criteria. It'll, it'll go. If it doesn't, they won't go away from it, but.
How many acres does this cover?
That's approximately about eight acres.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight acres. Any other questions or discussion? On the motion? None, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Greg. Paul? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We have, uh, Dan Wernas and Christine Fluger instead of Barb Chappie to do their report on Central Minnesota Jobs and Training.
All right, all right.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, listeners.
Morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Dina Wernas, Program Manager for our Public Assistance Programs at Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services. And I wanted just to give you a brief update regarding, um, some of the work that we've been doing over the past year with our EMFIP participants. With the pandemic, we've definitely seen some changes with our programs since January first with this program year. Um, some of the rules had been a little different for our participants. With the peacetime emergency in place, there were quite a few waivers from their requirements to participate in programming. Um, a little bit more flexibility than maybe the program has allowed for in the past. With the changes to that peacetime emergency ending July first and then rolling into what we call the sixty-day wind down period for our financial services and employment and training, we were able through the months of July and August to give our participants kind of a heads-up that, um, rules would be coming back to normal, program requirements will be back in place, um, the whole sanctioning process for participants would be returning. They would start to report monthly and come again. So there've been a lot of changes with our participants. And with any change, we often see some growing pains. So we've had some participants, and Christina is our supervisor for the program, she'll talk in a little bit, but we have seen some participants struggle with that change. Um, we've also seen our staff struggle with that change in that they have to do things a little different. The majority of our employment specialists across CMJTS service area were hired during the pandemic. We have, um, kind of new hires, so they haven't facilitated EMFIP, um, with the requirements that are intended. However, in Meeker County, we are very fortunate. We have Erica Krueger, who is our employment specialist, here serving Meeker County participants. Erica Krueger has been with CMJTS for I believe twenty-four years now. Um, she is a mentor-level staff. Our participants are in good hands with Erica. Um, I'm sure that Luanne would echo that same sentiment. Some of the things that Erica has done for our participants, the entire time we were in lockdown during that pandemic and our offices have been closed, Erica remained on-site in the office. So she was providing those services by appointment only for all of our Meeker County residents, ensuring that they had that face-to-face if they preferred it. She also, um, learned how to meet with individuals virtually, kind of the same way the rest of the world had to. So she's been pretty creative in her ability to connect with our clients, keep them engaged, keep them participating. She works with approximately fifty individuals at any given time who are looking for work, participating in work activities to gain that self-sufficiency or full-time employment. And she's been doing a great job with it. So we just wanted to reiterate that Erica, she's a lifetime of knowledge when it comes to EMFIP program services. On some of the other things that Erica has been able to do for us, she is what we call an in-house mentor. So she's provided all kinds of training to our new hires, um, helping them learn the diversionary work program that just returned September first for new participants applying for public assistance. Some of our staff had no clue what diversionary work program was or what the intentions were with that program. So she's been instrumental in training our staff. She's been training our staff on that sanction process, the non-compliance process. So she's been doing a really great job. In addition to that, Erica seems so knowledgeable. She has a wonderful relationship with financial services here at Meeker County. She meets one-on-one with the financial workers as well as Luanne on a regular basis, making sure that all of our data is consistent, making sure that individuals who are receiving those benefits are appropriate to receive those benefits and that we're speaking the same language from financial services to employment and training. It's really important to have consistency with our public assistance recipients and that's what I think Erica does well with Meeker County Services. So just to give you a quick update on some of the things that Erica might be doing with an individual, we're constantly assessing the participant. We're identifying first what their challenges are, but then we also focus on what we call a strengths-based approach to case management. We look at what's in place to help the participant be the most successful and then we build on that. So from that perspective, we're able to help individuals move quickly off of public assistance. The average participant receives EMFIP for about twenty-two months. So they're not on for an incredibly long time, but that's enough time to help Erica and the participant develop some employment plans together that provide them with the tools they need to be successful. Whether that be practicing mock interviewing so that they can do well when they're out looking for work. She helps them develop resumes. She connects them with our Career Force location in Hutchinson as well as providing those same Career Force services out of the Litchfield office. Some other things she does for individuals who have significant barriers, maybe family violence or mental health issues, chemical dependency issues. She's very familiar with all of the resources here in Meeker County. She's got great relationships with the community-based organizations and she's making referrals on a regular basis to ensure success. So with that, I wanted, um, to introduce you to Christina. She can go ahead and I guess introduce herself and then talk a little bit about.
Yeah. Good morning. I'm Christina Fluger. I'm the program supervisor and I came on behalf of Erica because she had vacation today. Um, but she had a great success story and Erica's wonderful, like Dina mentioned. She's a wonderful mentor and she really meets her customers where they're at. So with this one, she wrote up a little story for me to share with all of you, um, regarding Jesse and he was in our annual report as well. But he came to Erica and enrolled during COVID, so again, when, when waivers weren't, well, waivers were still in place, but he really needed help. So he enrolled with Erica in March of two thousand twenty-one. He had been left by his significant other with his son, so his significant other left him and he was homeless. Um, he was, didn't have any place to go and Erica, like Dina mentioned, is very, um, knowledgeable of the local resources in the community and helped work with him to get him placed in a long-term hotel stay. So he was able to stay in a hotel. He stayed actually from April and through June. But within that month period, he was able to secure a job that was forty miles from home. So home is here in Litchfield and he was able to, um, secure employment, find childcare with Erica's help as well as financial workers. And, um, to this day is still working at his current role. Um, and Erica wanted me to just mention EMFIP helped with job leads, transportation, encouragement, and his motivation to keep, and his own determination. So she was really met him where he was at and as a single dad now he is employed and has childcare and his own housing. So that's a huge success. One of those would be a success for him and he met all three, so, um, that was kudos to Erica and Luanne just in financial services, so.
Good.
Yeah.
We are here today to request approval of our two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three biennial service agreement between CMJTS to deliver EMFIP and diversionary work program services, um, in collaboration and partnership with Meeker County. Any questions for us?
Are these, the folks that participate in this, are they strictly Meeker County residents? They have to be a resident of the county to participate in this.
Correct. So all individuals who apply for public assistance benefits through Meeker County are mandatory to work with Employment and Training Services. So CMJTS or Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services, we have been that provider in Meeker County for many years through service agreement and contract. With that, individuals who are referred to us then meet with an employment specialist, which would be Erica, and we complete that enrollment, determine the skills, the challenges, and develop employment plans that include work activities. And that's required of all public assistance recipients here in Meeker County.
About how many folks a year go through this program?
Oh, is it about a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good estimate.
Yeah, yeah, roughly a hundred and fifty. Some are long-term and they're with us, you know, for several years. Um, some are short-term. So we have individuals who come on and off of EMFIP or public assistance. But on average, we see about a hundred and fifty clients coming through.
So is, is there a work requirement for anyone who's receiving daycare assistance? Man, mention any, or is it just if they're on general assistance?
So EMFIP, uh, the EMFIP dollars, which is federally known as TANF, Temporary Assistance for N needy Families, there is a specific component with EMFIP. It's what's considered, um, a support for the EMFIP program. Any individual who has eligible children, eligible for daycare assistance, as long as they have an employment plan developed with an employment specialist, the activities written into that employment plan are eligible for childcare assistance so that they can participate in activities moving them towards self-sufficiency.
So I guess I'm trying to figure this out because we all know there's a big amount of, uh, we're looking for help everywhere.
Yes.
I manage a business that's had to close two days a week.
Yes.
I have people that get help, which I'm fine with that. But then they choose, if they work three shifts a week, they may be short for one. Or if they're in, if you ask them to come in for another one, they don't. But I keep filling out the same paperwork every month. So I guess my question, I'm getting a little, um, I'm getting a little opposed to some of these programs because I'm not, and I understand COVID. Every business suffered through it, but now we, now we have another issue and it's getting huge. So if I, if I write on there, I don't, but I'm gonna start. This person missed five shifts and didn't call in. Is that gonna affect their benefit or is it the same?
From my understanding, I believe it will affect their unemployment benefits.
No, it's not unemployment I'm filling it out for. It's for social services.
Will the, I think Luanne may be able to answer.
It's not gonna, is it, Luanne? Go ahead.
Yeah, so for their, for their childcare services specifically, correct? So they need to fill out.
Well, I don't know. Some of them are for that, some of them are for, I don't, I don't ask what they're getting and I don't deny anybody getting anything if they qualify. But my struggle is starting to be, are you ever gonna come back and work? They, I, I mean, it's, I'm telling you, I can't stress enough how big of a problem this is becoming.
The EMFIP program, if you are not participating gainfully or meaningfully in obtaining work, you will lose your benefits.
Okay.
And so the waivers through COVID kind of lifted all of that for a period of time, but those waivers are no longer in place.
Well, I wish I could tell you this started after COVID, but it's just, it's, it's just come more to light.
Yeah.
But so, so I might be talking to Luanne if there, if it isn't just this, but other things. You know what I'm talking about, right? Yeah, what I, the question in my mind is, who are you sending the papers to? Well, different. Because if you're sending them to the department, uh, to deed, then that would be an unemployment issue. Right, yeah, it's not deed. If you're, if you're sending it. I mean, it might be for child, it might be for support payment. There's different issues that we have to fill out for. Different programs and different responses. Right. That happen to the non-cooperating, cooperating individual. So, so I guess my question then is, is there a work requirement for every program that comes out of this county?
No.
No.
Okay, that was my question.
And then how do you monitor the ones that there is a requirement?
Can I, yeah, if, so when they create their employment plan with Erica, which is they have to do if they're on public assistance, um, that employment plan is individualized. So if it's someone that's coming in and they are capable and able-bodied to work, we're gonna set them up to work thirty-five hours a week or job search to get to, get them to that point. And then Erica, in their employment plan, writes that they submit an activity log and that activity log comes in weekly. With that, if it's job search or work, depending on what, what that person is doing, then Erica discusses it with them when they turn it in. Typically, they're due every Monday and then they also, um, wanna do a weekly verification of what they applied for. So we're hoping that they move forward. After twelve weeks of job search, which is three months, which is quite a long time, we have the opportunity to put in a work experience, which is, um, it's kind of like an internship. I talk to, you know, people that it's an internship. It's very minimal, um, pay if any and you're working to earn your benefits. And so typically, when we see individuals that do that, they find a job outside of that because they wanna make more money and they know they're, they can and, um, are successful that way. So Erica does a really good job of monitoring those customers.
So when they fill out, they fill out their own activity sheet or is that initial by a, uh, you know, employment or?
That's what they. Not the activity log, no, that's their own. And then it's pay stubs they can turn into the county if they are working. Yep, yep.
I don't mean to sound bitter.
No, no, you're, it's real. It's just real.
Yeah.
Everywhere you go, from First District to every convenience store, every hospitality, I've raised, I've done it all and I'm not getting one application and I'm closing and the people are there are tired and so this is an issue. It's changing our, the way we operate. So I appreciate if these programs are helping, but I'm not seeing it right now.
Yeah, and we were honestly hoping, so CMJTS also administers, um, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act programming, the adult programs, the dislocated worker program. So we were hoping with the end to the federal unemployment on September fourth that we would see this mass return to the workforce. We just haven't.
No.
We haven't across the board. That's been a state concern that we're trying to address at the local level. Um, with that though, with the waivers ending for public assistance, it gives us a little bit of teeth in the game again so that at least on the EMFIP side for individuals who are not participating in that job search the way that they are supposed to be, we are now able to place them on what we call non-compliance and they will lose a portion of that benefits. And if they continue in non-compliance for a certain number of months, they're closed completely. So there are, again, this return September first, some repercussions for non-compliance. That might be enough of a motivation to get people back into the workforce who are receiving public assistance. But some of the other things we're doing at the, the agency level, we're trying to co-enroll our EMFIP participants with our WYO adult programming so that there's two individuals coming at it from a holistic approach. Our WYO adult program has a lot of additional funding available. We can do online job training where we can pay an employer fifty percent of the wage to hire somebody. So we're trying to co-enroll our EMFIP participants in some of these other programming to get them motivated and moving forward.
Most of the people I know would pay you to send somebody, so.
I know.
I'm just saying. And like I said, I, I know it's not, but something's not working here, so.
Yep, that's a state issue. I will tell you, we've heard it everywhere.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Beth, I would speak to your point a little bit too. I think, you know, nationally, it's a problem.
I agree.
And if, you know, as long as, you know, we're talking about stimulus, you know, the news of stimulus packages again, you know, from three trillion to one point seven five trillion. As long as that is out there and, and the eviction and everything. As long as that is out there and, and the eviction and everything, I think what we're seeing is a, a, a society that's got lax thinking that they're gonna be taken care of. And what that will do is the hides, they'll wait too long. Well, eventually you guys are gonna get really, that, that's common.
Yeah.
I think you know the storm is coming. You just, it's not if, it's when.
Yes.
I'm reading some study, I'm reading some studies that say there's gonna be a certain amount that's just not coming back to the workforce. And how they're managing that? Maybe they retired early or maybe they've decided to stay home with their children while one, there's other things. But there's also a segment that needs to come back to her. And I've experienced a lot of it. And, and to be clear, I know they need daycare, housing, and transportation, and I'm all for that. I'm for starting somebody and helping them up the ladder, not staying down here and depending on a check. But first, we have to have a body. And until we get those bodies, I don't believe we should cut them off three months after. I, I believe we have to help them get to a certain point. But your ladies have a problem on your hand. Just say it. And I agree with what you said. So.
It's gonna be a big.
Yep, it's a, it's a crisis.
That's my spiel. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So did we get a motion?
No, we haven't done the motion yet.
Who refers people to your program? You mentioned references.
Yep.
Loanne?
Yeah, the financial worker does. So when they're, once the individual is determined eligible for their benefits, a referral comes through what their MAX system speaks to our database, this so-called workforce one. And that tells our employment specialist Erica, there's a new applicant that needs to be scheduled to meet with you and get.
That's true.
And then we have a required time limit where we need to act on that referral and start moving forward.
And now that the waiver has lifted, if that person doesn't come in right away, that's when we put them in non-compliance. So there's more of a motivation on both parties to get them in as soon as possible and get them either job searching or getting them towards self-sufficiency. So. That's been helpful the last two months.
I see the county retains approximately seven point five for an administration fee for the funds.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, move to approve the 2022-2023 County MFIP biennial service agreement. Approve the agreement to provide MFIP slash DWP services between Meeker County and Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services for January one twenty-two to December thirty-first, 2022.
What, Paul?
Well, we're just gonna dive in on that conversation before we got there, but thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Yeah, so, so these are state and federal dollars that, that we're required to pass through. And this is a component of that program that we serve through TANF as Central Minnesota Jobs and Training has, has presented. The MFIP biennial plan that you're speaking of, Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson, is, is what we developed as a community and then submit to the Department of Human Services to have them release those funds to us and of course then pass those through to Central Minnesota Jobs and Training. This plan does every requirement of a public comment period. We did place this plan on our website for public comment. We received no public comment at this point. And so we're confident in being able to move forward with asking for board approval of this plan.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussion or questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck, girls. Get out and make a difference.
Send some believe.
Thank you.
Okay.
As a part of my request for board approval, we did have a contract that we have in place with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training for the offering of the services. The biennial plan is the agreement between us and, and the Department of Human Services. The next phase of this was the contract with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training. I would like to ask that you, we move forward with approving that contract. However, there does need to be a modification in the liability coverage to MCIT's standard liability coverage. So if that would be possible to, to move to approve the contract with the.
It was in the other motion. It's already been approved.
Contract. Well, you guys just kinda went right around me here.
Get this one.
If I may ask, that we have an addendum to that motion to change to the MCIT liability contract or liability coverage limits?
I don't know what you're talking about.
So what's our process here?
I thought it was included in the.
Madam Chair, you could entertain a motion to amend the previously approved agreement to include the MCIT insurance coverage language.
Okay. Can I hear a motion to amend the, the motion which we just passed?
Madam Chair, I will make such amendment to the motion that I presented.
Can you repeat that whole motion?
Yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah. Complete acronyms that were.
And I'll, I'll second that motion as Paul repeats it.
Because what, what it says here is move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three MFIP biennial service agreement and approve the agreement to provide MFIP DWP services between Meeker County and Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services for January one through December thirty-one of twenty-two. Does that include?
No.
Now we have to put the amendment, you want the amendment to that.
So that I can put the.
So to, to include what? To include MCIT?
So, so yeah, the, the motion would be to amend the agreement between the county and Central Minnesota Jobs and Training to include the MCIT insurance coverage language.
That was exactly what I said.
Yeah, I thought so.
You nailed it, Paul.
You did it. You did well.
So then we would amend it to include the MCIT insurance agreement. And we have a motion and a second on the amendment to the motion.
Just to be clear, it'd be to amend it to ha, include the MCIT recommended insurance limits.
Okay, I'll let. Cory, capture that wording.
Got it.
I'm still clear.
We're good. Okay. Do we hear any discussion? Any questions about the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Amendment to the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I apologize for creating a mess for you.
No, no, it's good.
That's awesome.
The cross we have to bear.
Testing my parliamentary procedure skills here, Paul.
Nine fifteen.
That one you can blame on the attorney.
Well, no, 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 it's, I got it. So just a, a, a background, prior to COVID, we were serving about forty to fifty families underneath this program. During the course of the last year, we've been serving about sixty families. A term I think that, that, that I've been hearing around and it's kind of a catchall is the great resignation. Um, and trying to find out what's occurring there, there's not a lot of information. There's not a lot of research. There's a number of folks that are looking at what's occurring on this problem. And I'm sure Central Minnesota Jobs and Training is also trying to figure out what, what's going on when we have as many jobs available as we do and very well-paying jobs too. So it is a dynamic that, that needs to continue to be looked at. And we're happy that our partner with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training is also going to be helping us figure out what's actually occurring. We are limited because of state and federal regulation on what we can do to address some of the individuals that might not be participating in work, but we are taking a look at it. So, thank you. Before we move into the next phase of, of what I'm asking, I want to thank Commissioner Schifelbein for some of his questions the last time I was able to meet with you. And I have been working with Sheriff Cruz and Chief Deputy Howell. We do have a, a, a large volume of information that, that they were able to glean from their systems that, and also the corner, and they're going to be looking at the state medical examiner to get even some more local detail as to what's going on as far as suicide rates. But also their calls out to folks in the community for some of those domestic type issues that folks are having and seeing if we can't start attaching ourselves more in those areas. So thank you, Commissioner Schifelbein, for that. The next order of business I have for you was to kinda give Commissioner Schmidt a little bit of brief about NDSA view.
Okay.
Whatever, I won't do that.
We, we can take time for them.
Well, I don't know what the University of North Dakota changed their, their mascot to, so I was gonna say CO2, but. With that, the next order of business I have before you is to approve our social services accounts payable.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and it has been seconded to approve the accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Anyone have any? Any points for Paul? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
If you have any questions about how our budget works, please feel free to forward those to me so I can address those when I have a presentation about our dashboard for cost allocations. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you, Paul. Very good. And Barb?
Good morning. We're at Lock County Attorney. I want to supply them this morning, and that is the application to conduct off-site gambling for the VFW. They partner with, we partner with the City of Litchfield granting this approval to use either the lake or the raffle and their gambling activity and/or the county park if the lake is not safe for them to do that. So the DNR requires both our approvals. So before you have a resolution, which I'm asking that you approve for the activity that the VFW plans to have on February twelfth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
This has been several years now they've done this, so.
And they often have to move it off the lake entirely because of weather. But in order to have it here in the DNR approval, they need the dual opportunities.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve VFW post-two thousand eight eighteen application to conduct off-site gambling on February twelfth, twenty twenty-two at Lake Ripley Park.
I hear a motion. Do, do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. All right, any discussion on this? This is during the fishing contest, the.
Winter cave.
The winter, the winter cave. Sure. Any additional questions or discussion? Because this is a resolution, we'll need a roll call. Cory?
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schifelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes. Motion, resolution passes. All right.
And the last item will be the cables that were sent on this to me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It has been seconded for the county and hospital accounts payable. Is there any discussion?
I see we got a new truck.
You noticed that? It was a big amount.
Yes, well.
Big part of the table.
All right. Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Barb. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Long time no see.
Yeah.
Um, what we need to do now, folks, is we need to recess the county board and convene as the county ditch authority. So I would like to make note of that taking place right now. And then as the county ditch authority, our next presenter is John. John. All right.
Good morning, John Condon, Meeker County Ditch Inspector. I bring to you this morning, uh, looking to get an approval for a quote for tree removal on County Ditch Thirty-six. During inspection this spring on County Ditch Thirty-six, there were, uh, this is, this work is towards the outlet end of the ditch. There were multiple areas that there's erosion occurring, there's a clean out that's needed, um, there's down trees in the ditch. The issue is there are some pockets of trees. That trees need to be removed so that we can get equipment in there and bring riprap, that kinda stuff to get in there and actually do our work. This is why, this is the first step in getting some of that work done. I had sent the quote out to six different contractors, had three responses. The low quote was from CMF Tree Service in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That would be accessed to the line orders on the system once that work is completed. I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the contract for tree removal on County Ditch Thirty-six.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the quote from CMF Tree Service in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for tree removal on County Ditch Thirty-six.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I would, I have a question for John. Is CMF, are, are they from the county?
They are from Candy Ohio. They're from Wilmer.
Okay. Mr. Dirt is from Meeker, correct?
Correct. He's from Cosmo.
I just wanna make that, you know, for two hundred and fifty.
I'm, I'm on your side. I looked at that too, but I didn't know where they were from.
Although make one note, um, there was another con, there was two, uh, RFQs that went out to bid. The other one's on JD seventeen, and Mr. Dirt did get that contract for thirteen thousand and six hundred dollars, I believe it was. And that doesn't need board approval because it's under the amount for joint. I'll bring it to you guys' attention, send it an email, but, um, he did get awarded that contract. Him and CMF were really close on that one as well, so.
Do we have?
I just wanted to make sure.
No, I agree with, I agree with you.
That was my.
I agree with you.
I do too.
That it should stay in the county.
This, what, what is the amount? Yeah, what is the amount that? These, these things have to come before the board if they're at a certain dollar figure?
For the county ditches, uh, anything over ten thousand needs to come to the county board. For the judicial ditches, uh, like with Candy Ohio, Renville, anything that's forty thousand or more needs to go to the joint board. Um, generally, you know, you said I mentioned that one regarding the tree removal for thirteen thousand and six hundred. I'll bring that to you guys' attention. So if you guys have any questions, you know, why you're doing it or whatnot. But it doesn't need approval. So that's why that one is not on the agenda.
One comment though for, uh, it's good to bring it up, but remember this is two hundred and fifty dollars of someone else's money. So if you wanna approve something within the county, you're actually applying more money to people in the ditch. And I know if it's on the ditch, I, I really wouldn't care where it came from per se.
Well, except the guy from Candy Ohio pays his property taxes in Candy Ohio and the people. And Mr. Dirt pays his property taxes here, which is what I always try to think about when we do the.
No.
I mean, it's three hundred, it's under three hundred dollars. It's not.
Is that a negotiable thing?
No.
Or can we not say, you know what, we gotta bid here. Can you come down two hundred and fifty bucks?
That I don't think we should be trying to do.
You know, that, we can't, you know.
That's not fair to the other contractor.
But I think legally, we can take the next bid if we want.
Yep.
Those are farmer tactics.
I see, yeah. It's like, hey.
I have to ask though. Um, that last bid at thirty-seven, or was he bidding apples to apples on this, or how was that?
That one, I actually talked with him because he was doing some clean outs for us. And he said, I didn't even look at it. He's like, I use an aerial and I just put a number to it. And these other, CMF and Mr. Dirt, they asked me to go drive them around with the side by side. So both of these guys.
Saw it.
Saw it. Um, and knew exactly what they're looking at. That's probably why their bids were so close because they both knew exactly what they're looking at. The other one, he told me he didn't even look at it. My thought is why you even put a number at that point, but.
Yeah.
He'd have been making some money.
Yeah, he would have.
Chair Brettison, if I may jump in regarding, um, looking at alternative bids. One thing to keep in mind is when we're looking at maybe opting in for a, a business within the county, one of the reasons why we would do that is, for example, the sheriff's squad. If there was a business in Meeker County, it'd be closer for warranty work. It would be. If there was a business in Meeker County, it'd be closer for warranty work, it would be closer for pickup. So it'd essentially be cost saving to the county to pick local. And so those are kind of some of the reasons why we would want to justify saying, well, we're going to spend the extra three hundred dollars to keep it within the county. And so if you want to pick the local contractor, then I would just ask that there be some sort of justification why we would want to go down. How it would benefit the county if it would be within the, it'd be time saving. However, because the contractor is coming out to do the job, I'm not sure where that justification would come from, because it wouldn't necessarily be a cost saving to the county. But we can work through that if you guys have more creative ideas.
I don't mean to create a, I just, I didn't know where CMF was from and it was what, then two hundred and fifty bucks.
Two hundred and fifty bucks.
I was gonna ask a question before you.
I have no problem. I've never had a problem with any of your questions, so.
No, I just, I just.
So we have a board.
I will say I worked with both contractors on tree removal projects. They both do really good work. There's, I don't, I'm not questioning CMF Tree Services' quality if the job runs done.
You, okay, and since Mr. Dirt has the other project, are you concerned about him being able to get two projects done?
A little bit more concerned because.
That's, that's, I'm just.
One thing with Mr. Dirt is he's got, you know, he's a smaller who, you know, he's got three other guys and that's all they have. CMF Tree Service is a little larger, they got more equipment, they can get in and do a job pretty quick.
No, I just, I just, I just wanted, I was gonna try and get that out before we got into the nuts and bolts here.
I really like when we see the acceptance of bids from within our county, whether we purchase a vehicle or we have work done. I, I really like to see that support for our local businesses. I fully agree with Beth that those folks pay taxes and hopefully hire people from within our county, more local. I would not be opposed to accepting the higher bid. How does the board feel about this?
I believe, Madam Chair, you have a motion on the floor.
It has not been seconded.
It has not been seconded, but I think we better address the motion first.
Do I hear a second on the motion which is on the floor? Hearing none, motion fails. Any additional discussion on this? Any questions? Otherwise I would entertain a new motion in regard to this request.
I'll make a motion to approve fifteen thousand eight hundred to Mr. Dirt tree removal for ditch thirty-six.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion. It has been seconded to accept the other offer. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
My only question is for County Attorney, Chief Olline. No liability here, no wrongdoing.
I would just like to know the justification for how the county would benefit from having the bid be higher than the first bid.
Well, in the county, I'm gonna say it's gonna get the work, easier to get the work done, because he lives in Meeker County.
Closer proximity.
Closer proximity.
Pays taxes here.
Can't use that one, I don't think.
Can't, can't use that one?
No, and the bid is the bid. I don't think it's gonna cost the contract, I mean, it. We should not be considering the cost of the contractor, we need to be considering the cost of the county and how there would be a benefit. And so that's where the justification needs to come from. Like from my example with the cars, the county is saving money because they're not putting on forty extra miles, they're not spending the gas. And so that's just something I want the board to consider.
Would that be a basic consideration here too? They wouldn't be coming from across the way, they're more local?
There are mobilizations figured into the cost. That's all accounted for, so their travel, you know, they're coming a little bit further from Wilmer, but their travel is figured into that cost.
Yeah, we're, we're approving the number on the sheet.
The bid's the bid.
Yep.
That's the.
That's what it's a lump sum, that's what it's cost removal.
Okay, so I opened a can of worms here.
You didn't have to, I don't think. Three hundred, you know.
No, I, is there a legal objection?
You're the one that opened.
I'd be concerned about the board taking the second bid without any, hearing any justification for why we, why we would be benefiting from paying more on the second bid. However, your, your county, your county attorney takes a conservative.
So that's a legal objection. You're concerned, is that a legal objection? Is that, can you?
I take the conservative approach and I am concerned that we have not met the burden of.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking.
And, and I do think that a comment may have been missed by Ditch Inspector Condon in that he's actually now concerned about the timelines of being able to complete the project because of the staffing with Mr. Dirt. So it's actually working against the county if you were to pay more.
Always, always follow the agenda. That's what you need to learn. Just gotta follow along like sheep.
I think this is a great conversation to have, because you do need to keep in mind that when we are looking at, you know, utility vehicles or items like that.
Well, then we bid off the state contract, and I've had people come and say, well, how come you didn't get a bid here? And they say, because they're not on the state contract, so, you know. I don't ever, I recall one time, I think we did a car that was a little bit cheaper. But I recall many times when they didn't get a bid because they were only bidding state contract. This isn't state contract, so I thought we had more choice than that, but. Whatever.
I guess I don't understand why we can't use the justification of where they pay their taxes. I, of course, we don't know where their employees come from, if they live here, that, that would be a bigger, a bigger question. But why couldn't justification of where the business is located and where they pay taxes be a justifiable reason for doing this?
It would then, it would then remove any sort of transparency and process with the bidding. So these individuals are bidding based upon their location already, how close they are, and they're taking that in consideration to their bid. And so we can't be removing the ability for fair bidding process.
Yeah, that would eliminate CMF and Withrich Excavating if you were looking just within the county.
What was that?
You would eliminate CMF Tree Service and Withrich Excavating from bids if you're specifically looking just within the county.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I mean, my only reasoning for bringing it up was not knowing where CMF was from and, and the closeness of the bid, I mean, two hundred and fifty bucks.
Exactly.
Close.
I mean, we're one and a half percent. I mean, we're, man, that was my only reason to bring it up.
And, and getting the work completed is scheduled for the winter of twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Well, that's all contingent on the weather too.
Yeah.
Whether they're even gonna be able to do it.
Right.
No matter who gets the bid.
Yeah.
Any additional discussion on the motion? We have a motion. It has been seconded to accept the second bid. Hearing no further discussion, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. We will now adjourn as the county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board. And Phil, you're next.
Now that we're all controversial.
I walked us right into a pool.
That was good discussion. Learned, learned things.
Yeah, well, that's.
All right.
Good morning. Phil Schmoll, public works director. Two items for you this morning. First one pertains to our township maintenance agreement for road maintenance. I guess just to briefly summarize, we've had a number of discussions with last year's county board, this year's county board. I've gone around individual township meetings to gather input from them. Those conversations were melded into putting this agreement together, which would be a new package. We've done township maintenance since nineteen sixty-nine. When the county turned its county road system, not its county state aid, but county road system, back to the township. I think that's why the county started doing township maintenance by contract at that time. So town road maintenance, since twenty nineteen is kind of when this discussion all started. Individual meetings with townships is kind of where I was sent. And through that through COVID, which really stretched things out a bit, but I did get through them all and put together a draft agreement. I thought we had some really good conversations with the townships. For those of you that weren't able to attend a couple of the township meetings that I went to, I thought they were very positive. Township feedback. So the townships that use us for maintenance, there's fifteen of them. They overwhelmingly want to continue to use the county for maintenance. The two that are currently hiring a contractor want to continue down that road as well. Most townships do like what we're doing. I need help. I scrolled out of my comments.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. Hi there.
You're very honest about that anyway. I never use the comments. No, I know.
On your own.
Roll the guy right under the bus, huh?
He's gotta commit it to memory, Phil.
I'll do better at memorizing next time. Townships in general, some would be willing to pay more for more service, some would like to pay less, but have the same service. The feedback varied in that regard. The vast majority really appreciate their operators, they're happy with their operators and, like I said, what we're doing for them. That was something that was pretty evident, pretty much every township meeting I went to. Some townships like the idea of being able to be a little more hands-on, some don't. When I say hands-on, I'm talking about miscellaneous things like picking up trash in the ditch, removing downed trees, things they can handle without calling us. Because when they get the county involved, especially after hours, that's a phone call to us. We bring in an operator who comes to shop, gets equipment, goes and checks it out. And sometimes it's a tree that two guys can drag off the road by themselves. So by the time we incur all that cost, it's not efficient. So I certainly encourage townships, at least go check it out yourself. Because if you don't have to get the county involved, it saves the taxpayers' dollars. However the billing works, it saves dollars.
And that money then goes to that particular township, that bill would go to the township.
Yep, and, and future, one thing that I'm doing with this agreement is trying to clarify what we do and don't do. So the per mile fee is just covering your snow and ice, gravel road blading, and ditch mowing. All that other stuff, signs, garbage, downed trees, emergency stuff would be billable. So in that case, township's the ability, if they want to be more hands-on, it will take care of things themselves, it will save them money. If not, it's a billable expense. Dead ends, we talked quite a bit about dead ends at the townships. Differ, differing opinions as far as the efficiency or inefficiency of maintenance on dead ends. We'll leave it at that. We talked about fee surcharges for dead ends to represent inefficiencies. Most townships weren't really interested in that. It, it makes things more complicated than they need to be. That's kind of the summary of those discussions. So I dropped that from our maintenance agreement concept. One thing I have been really pleased with is a number of townships have already started making improvements on dead ends that we've showed them or told them about. Some have hired contractors already late last winter, we're starting to hire contractors on a few of the dead ends that we really struggle with. So I'm very pleased to see some of that action. Condition of dead ends, that, that'll be an ongoing thing. We'll work with our townships in the future to continue to talk about where we have trouble. When I talk about condition, it's usually size and structure of dead ends. Dead ends typically, the turnaround is where it gets soft, because it doesn't get traffic, it doesn't get used except by our plows. When we drive in there before the ground's froze or after it thaws, we have a problem. But that'll be an ongoing situation, working on rural ditch mowing. That was a pretty common theme for townships. They want to see us mow more ditch. So currently and in the agreement, we mow two swaths, and that can vary in width depending on what mower we have out there. We try to best set it up to fit the area we're mowing with that equipment. To add additional mowing, we are, we're gonna run into more trees, brush, garbage, more obstacles. So that's a challenge, and time is a problem too. If we go into a third pass, time is an issue. For anyone that's made ditch hay, ditches have obstacles. If you've got the same couple of miles you do all the time, you know where those are. If you're doing seven hundred miles, you don't know where those are. So that's a big challenge we have with trying to widen out our ditch mowing. Fairness, townships want to see a fair program, like I said, that's part of what we're trying to do with paring down the per mile fee to include those big three items. With the rest being billable, townships have control over what they want us to do and see a bill for and what they don't. We talked about different setups, billing everyone per mile, billing everyone per hour, billing it per task. They can ask us everything. Basically, if they don't want us to plow, we won't go up till they call us. We discussed those things, but they didn't go far, because running a system like that with fifteen different townships on board would be too complex. It wouldn't be manageable for the county. Heavy equipment operator wages, that was something that was brought up a few times when we talked about potentially hiring operators. Some townships are concerned about the wages. They wonder where we're gonna find those employees, because I think we have a lot that are in the construction trade. They know what contractors pay, and we're not competitive with contractor pay in general. I'll just leave it at that. That was some discussion that was had. So new agreement highlights, did not go and reinvent the wheel. It is pretty similar as far as the layout and the format to what the old agreement was. Primary focus, as I said, was on fairness, trying to keep things together, reduce some of the gray area that we've had in the past where some townships do perceive others getting more, better service for, for the little things, not for the big three, but for the little things. Just trying to clean that up. Giving townships and having to hire contractors. In the past, we didn't have a way to recognize the township to hire a contractor for a dead end. But then still want to be part of the maintenance agreement. So what I did in this one is I just gave them the out that if a township wants to hire a contractor for snow and ice, we'll still go in there and blade it if it's a gravel road. Free of charge, once a year, and once a year is typically enough for a low-use dead end. Engineering services, there's some language in the new agreement to clear up timelines associated with giving us an advance notice to do a construction project for a township. Don't come to us at the last second, give us a little heads up. It's fifteen months for a full-blown engineered design plan, and then a three-month heads up if they want to get in on our pavement marking, seal coating, that kind of thing. Just to give us time to incorporate it into our program rather than trying to drop what we're doing and take care of what they're looking for. And I think it'll be good for everybody. It'll help townships think about planning a little more and just getting an idea what they want to do before it's time to do it. Agreement terms, so this agreement, the way I have it set up, it will renew automatically. Either side has the option to terminate, modify with notice, but we're not gonna come back every three years and revamp the agreement. If we, if we want to make changes, we have the opportunity to do that. I just didn't want to make it, so we had to rehash it without necessarily needing to do that every few years. The cost of the per mile fee will change annually. That, I think I had built in a two-year notice, so two years in advance of the actual fee, we'll adjust our fee based on historical costs. We'll take our past three years' costs and figure out the thirty-seventy split, similar to what we've been doing, or other, if we have a discussion to change that. And then let the townships know, so they have two years to put it into their budget and be prepared for the fee adjustment. The fee that they've paid the last couple of years, seven hundred dollars per mile, will still be the fee in twenty twenty-two because townships have not adjusted their budgets to accommodate that, and then the increases will start in twenty twenty-three.
Maybe a hundred dollar jump between twenty-two and twenty-three.
We've been at seven hundred dollars for three years.
Okay.
So I felt it was necessary to, to some extent, try and catch up. And.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, in fees, we'll see how it works out, but with less of the miscellaneous things, the trash pickup, things of that nature. With that not being part of the per mile fee, that being billable, our costs, I expect to actually shrink somewhat. The actual dollars, maybe not, because everything gets more expensive. But if that makes sense, the per mile fee may help compensate that. Not increasing it too much, not explaining this well. Just keeping the core services covering the per mile fee and then billable items bringing in other revenue will help offset not raising the per mile fee substantially. You know, years down the road, when we look back and re-figure the. You know, years down the road, when we look back and re-figure the three-year average, or whatever we do to adjust the fee, we'll see more clearly how it's shaking out. This is my projection.
So these, these dollar figures for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five are projected then?
That, that is what the contract will be, and that's what the township should budget for.
Okay.
But how that compares with how much billable work comes out in additional to that per-mile fee, that's yet to be seen. Cause I don't know how much townships are gonna wanna take care of things themselves versus hiring us. For things like garbage, downed trees, things of that nature. And on the whole, those items are a small dollar amount compared to the per-mile fee.
And Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, I was with you on several of the township meetings, but we never discussed any dollar value at those meetings with the townships.
Per-mile fee, no.
Right, so they, this will be?
It'll sub-be new.
New to them.
They don't know about this.
The ones I've heard from is, just raise what we pay, just raise what we pay.
Yep.
We wanna keep having it, well, then they're out of. Their other option is to choose less services or get and outsource it, right? Cause we're hiring two drivers here coming up, or two maintenance workers, so. That was what I always heard when every, I mean, I only have one town, but I hear from people, and that's what they say, we need better service, we'll pay more, so we'll see. And they can budget accordingly now, they have a year to do that.
That was the biggest concern I had heard, was not being able to budget the increases, so that's why.
We're going another year.
The increases are behind.
Right.
But if we give them two years' notice, that fits into their budget cycle, and that should not be the issue.
I agree.
It seemed like, the ones that I was with you, that they were very receptive to taking care of these small things themselves. They didn't, I don't think they really put it all together how much it was costing them when it happened.
Right.
So, they seemed very receptive.
They'll probably become less dependent on us for.
Well, that's what I, I want the townships to, I want them to be hands-on, you know, no one's going out on your road, checking things out. Cause like I said, when you get the county involved, there's a lot of moving parts compared to a township officer going out and taking care of something minor. And sometimes, of course, call us, if you need us, call us, but maybe determining that need, I'd like to see the township boards determine the need.
That would maybe be a good suggestion on our part, to have a conversation and notify our townships of issues like this. Don't make that phone call right away. Who are your supervisors? Do they understand what their additional responsibilities are with holding a position as a township supervisor? That, that's.
I think you've been having those discussions at township meetings, haven't you?
And when people call, if it's township road, we do direct them to the township, cause we don't wanna jump on things on a township road, especially if it's gonna be billable. Without a township officer being aware of it or asking us to do it.
Because they may not know. What, we're gonna receive a bill for that?
Right, I want them to be in the loop anytime something's billable, cause there's been controversy with that in the past.
That would be a good.
Even with this language, if they do call in for something like a tree removal, where you say, hey, this is a new billable thing. I mean, is that the new thing? Because in the past, what happens is, sometimes they, like, they don't, they don't see this language, if you will, they don't have it on, and they call in. And then suddenly they get a bill for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks or something. That's the transparency that would help with the township too. And then, the other aspect of this is, what I always heard is, as a township supervisor, it's like, okay, how many times are the county gonna actually blade our road? And with the increase in price, you're gonna probably have more scrutiny in terms of, hey, my road grader hasn't been here for ten days, or two weeks, or something. Is that gonna be addressed? Because that'll give you a headache, I guarantee you that. And that's the biggest, that and snow removal are the two biggest things that township people struggle with. And they don't understand, you know, if you put the increased price, and then they're still, their blade comes by in ten days. They're not, they're gonna be like, why are we, why are we paying more? Because they don't quite, you know, I understand the thirty-seventy, but you know, we're all paying the same taxes, one pot from another. Since the townships don't have as big a pot as the counties.
And I'll say, by increasing price, are we gonna reduce our blade routes in theory from a ten-day to an eight-day route? No, will we do more coverage? I'd say yes on the whole, cause we, when we talk about operators, we won't be scalping blade operators to help the crew as much. Are you gonna be able to realize that in your coverage times? It's not gonna be obvious to anybody. I mean, we could maybe do an analysis after we're running it and see that we're getting across things a little quicker. It's not gonna be a significant enough change to show up. And a good portion of the cost increase, the per-mile stuff we're seeing, is just inflationary costs that have happened over three years. Part of it is in recognition of the additional operators, potentially, and that's the other piece is inflationary. But trying to show people that we're getting more frequent coverage on blade, I'd say it's gonna be hard to show. Snow and ice may be easier, cause we can show we had more equipment on the road during an event, less paying any bill.
Well, you will also have that new system we purchased.
Yes.
Which will track.
Yes.
You'll be able to say, yeah, you're right, we haven't been by you, we didn't realize that.
Yep, and blade frequency is a little tricky too, cause townships mostly agree that every road doesn't need the same blade frequency. It's dependent on amount of traffic, type of traffic, condition of the road. So, what I stress with the townships, be definitely talking with your operators, so I want them to be attending the township meetings. About if you think we should be on certain roads more or less. I don't want them to blade every road the same and just follow their route every time they go, because that's not doing the roads the best they can do.
You'll, you'll enter year number two at twenty-twenty-four, you'll already be talking about the rate increase, or possible rate increase of twenty-twenty-six.
The other aspect is, when we're hiring two more heavy equipment, will that cover anything in terms of, like, say, the local township blader is on vacation for whatever, a week? Which, actually, that's where the rub comes, it's in, suddenly, it's two weeks before your blade, your road got bladed, and then it starts getting. You start seeing, you know, the waves and stuff, and that's when you start getting calls as a township person. Is that gonna be rectified with this, or not really? I mean, to some degree. Because that, honestly, those are the, those are the rubs that usually happen, it's just that big lapse, you know? I mean, I know some roads, it doesn't matter if it's dry, it's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to do much anyway, grading a road, but.
I'll say it's not the target of what we're doing, but part of, with the moving pieces, there again, by not pulling blade operators, you'll still have, someone takes time off. We'll go take care of issues up there, but we try not to send foreign blade operators out to blade anymore than you have to, just because there's so many intricacies of these roads, they screw things up. I mean, you wanna keep the same operator on those same routes, so that's one of the challenges we have. We'll go up and clean something up if it's really getting washed for you or something like that, but we don't wanna send a different operator that doesn't know how they treat these supers, or how they blade different curves, or so-and-so's driveway that needs a special something. So that's the challenge I think about when we talk about that directly. No, that's not the target of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, that makes sense, but like I said, that's usually the rub that happens. And then the other question I have is, when did we go to four days a week versus five for the blade operator? Cause what, what gets a little mucky there is if one of those days happens to rain. You know, then you're actually not getting the opportunity to take that day when it gets dried off. If it happens to hit one of those four days, now you're down to three days of actual blading versus five. I mean, I was just curious where that came, is that just for recruitment, that's the only way you could get that done, or what's the process in terms of that?
So that's something that's been going on long before I got here, but that's something annually negotiated between myself and Carlin and the union. Operators can request to go to four ten-hour days versus five eight-hour days. Theory is, if you're out for a ten-hour day, you have gained a little efficiency. You have longer days, you can start early, you can work a little later, less trips back and forth to the shop, but that is one of the losses. If someone wants to put down gravel on a Friday, we need to make sure we know about it, we may have to send somebody out on overtime potentially. Rain, it gives you less days to jump out there. I'd say, part of it is employee satisfaction, retention, and part of it is, if it really is a problem, it's something we can revoke from the unions. This year, I think about half of our blade operators were on four tens, and half were on five eights, basically on their preference. And as long as we have at least one mechanic available while people are on, we go along with it unless we know there's gonna be a problem.
So this was pretty well-received by the township boards then?
The discussions were, yes. The process for this agreement, I didn't take the agreement and shout it to all the township boards, we talked about the things in the agreement. But with fifteen different, well, seventeen different entities, even though only fifteen are currently utilizing the service, I can't tweak the agreement based on and go round and round. So, I put together the agreement based on all the feedback and discussions we've had, bring it to the county board, and if the county board approves it, at that point, they'll send it out to the townships.
And you say there are two townships that do not participate. Do they not participate in any of this? They're completely independent, or how does that work, Phil?
They hire contractors for their maintenance, yes. We're still here, if they want us to install signs, yeah, we'll still install signs at our fee schedule rate. We can do that kind of thing for them, but we don't do the snow and ice, we don't blade their roads.
But they do get reimbursed.
They get, there is a non-maintenance agreement, that was implemented years ago, where the subsidy that we pay, the fifteen townships that utilize our service, meaning we don't bill them for all of our costs, we write a check to the two townships not currently part of our.
And then they use that to, to do their maintenance.
They're their contractors.
Which are the two townships that are?
Collinwood and Dassel.
Collinwood and Dassel, okay.
And Collinwood has a, seems to be very satisfied with their contractor and the performance, so it's worked out well for Collinwood.
Dassel, I met with them two months ago maybe, and they seem satisfied with using a contractor. I think they like the arrangement, it gives them more control.
I think they were worried about losing a contractor for a while, but.
What's that?
I think they were worried about losing their contractor.
That's still part of your.
They're working through some things.
But I heard a lot of good comments from them, that they were happy with it last year, I know, so, cause they like being able to, you know, see somebody come by on Saturday, or whatever, you know, they.
They can dictate.
They have control, they're in control, so.
Yep, so this is basically the agreement they have, you have had in the past with some changes?
Yes, and I guess I did not put the old agreement in the packet. If you wanna see that, of course, I can send that out.
I think it'll be interesting to get your feedback, see what, get their feedback after we, if we approve that, see what happens.
And if you feel there's more discussion that we should have before approving the agreement, there's, we can do that. I, I came here today seeking approval of the agreement, but I'm open to.
What is it, like, for the twenty-twenty-three, for example, Phil, what is the thirty-seventy, what would that actually be? Is eight hundred in the realm, or is it actually still not quite thirty-seventy with that, using that figure? Is that too hard?
It's gonna be close.
Okay.
You know, we use historical costs in our annual report, we'll show, I think it goes all the way back to sixty-nine, the seventy-thirty split. And I'll say, for the twenty-twenty annual report, I don't have it with me, but we were both sort of maybe on twenty-eight-seventy-two or something like that. So we had some catching up to do with the seven hundred dollars a mile in twenty-twenty.
Okay, cause I think for a long time, it was six hundred dollars or something, forever and stuff.
It did move for a while.
Well, it seems to me, when I looked at that annual report that you gave us, there was, it would sit tight for a few years and then jump.
Thirty blocks, five or eight years where it didn't move, and then it would take a big jump, and then it would sit tight for a few years, a big jump. I'd like to try, well, let's have laid out, look at it annually, and try and move it slowly instead of taking those big leaps. From seven to eight, that's a pretty significant jump, mainly because we haven't moved for three years. And I don't know what twenty-twenty-six will bring, this is a projection, I shouldn't say it, but maybe it'll go down, I don't know. That's gonna be dependent on our cost history.
Well, inflation is, I mean, next year's gonna be horrible.
Well, that's, that's a struggle, is the cost of equipment, fuel.
Fuel is.
It's been going up, even just getting equipment's challenging now, and then labor, it's going to be getting more expensive too.
Benefits.
I, I just wanted to let you know, everything I said is basically what you're gonna hear.
Sure.
Just so you, I'm sure you understand it anyway already by af-actually talking to them, but once they see an increase in price, they'll be like, oh crap. We should be getting it every week. We should see that blade coming by, and it's.
Yeah.
Saying it's really not gonna change.
And on the whole, if you look at the, even the hundred-dollar increase, which is a big increase across about seven hundred miles, we're talking about seventy thousand dollars. And our township maintenance program, I think we were in that one, one and a half million dollars we spent on township maintenance. So seventy thousand dollars against one and a half million, I mean, you can't expect a huge change. Part of that is the subsidy, you know, we're absorbing most of the cost of our arrangement.
Right, but they all pay county tax anyway, so, I mean, the only difference is if you lived in a town or not, you know, that would be a difference. Otherwise, you're paying it one way or another.
That's true.
Well, I live on South Armstrong Avenue down here, so how does that fit in for me?
Just saying. Yeah, I know, that's what I said, I mean, it's.
I mean, they wanted more, they want more drivers, we're doing, I've heard, you know, I say they, if I was me, I'd rather have, be in control and be on our own. But that, they don't have an appetite for that, so.
Well, you have to.
From what I've heard.
That all of those supervisors, this isn't a full-time job for them.
No.
And, you know, snow events could be a full-time day for a supervisor if they were trying to manage. I understand why they wanna stay with the, the maintenance agreement.
Well, unless they outsource, like Dassel does, or Collinwood does. But that, this, this is why few counties are doing this anymore, because this is the issue, obviously.
What really sparked the conversation is when we made the decision to walk away from maintenance and dead ends on the township system, that really got the ball rolling with sets of great conversations with these township boards. And that's where it became pretty clear, the townships, at least the ones that, discussions we had, there aren't any that are currently using us that are thinking, well, maybe we shouldn't, maybe we should hire a contractor, we don't like it, they, they want us to do the work.
Right.
So that's something I keep in mind in putting together the agreement, is it's, it's not necessarily a negotiation, it's us trying to do what we think is the most fair for the program we're putting.
Yeah, it would've been possible for them to get a contractor just to do their dead ends, I mean, that would've been so expensive. And I don't even know if they would've got them done, to be honest, so.
But I think.
And to do it all at once, too, I mean, how many contractors are out there? There are contractors out there, but enough to grab that all in one chunk?
So inefficient too, I mean, but.
So the dead end is a part of this new contract?
Yes.
Where you'll continue to assist them.
Deficient dead ends, too small, turnarounds are poor, but we're gonna continue to work with the townships, and they seem receptive to working with us on making improvements.
Well, in some cases, they just gotta trim some trees and do some things, don't they, I mean?
Yep.
And I know Darwin, a few years ago, we took a little ride, and they took on some things, they were very, very willing to take on. And they just don't wanna lose this service, but they're in kind of a different.
You made a good comment, Phil, at one of the meetings that I attended with you. What's happening now are that a lot of dead ends are around lakes, and it used to be seasonal cabins on little dirt roads. And they didn't have to be dealt with in the middle of the winter. Well, now there are, you know, big expensive year-round homes, people want to get out. They don't necessarily drive a four-wheel-drive truck, they're driving a car. So, things like that have changed, and, and the townships are having to deal with that. And then, of course, it, it filters into your, you know, responsibilities, but that.
That's why no one wants to cut trees either, I can tell you that.
Yep.
Can hear that from the ditch cut meeting last night.
Oh boy, last night, don't cut the trees.
Monkey with trees around lakes.
Not box elder, you can get rid of the box.
Have at it.
That was a good comment.
But you know, Julie makes a valid point, a lot of year-round homes, but they didn't change the road, that's still that marginal road getting up to their driveway, so.
That's a big part of our challenge, is the evolution of the lake homes, cause there's no road in most spots to do anything with the road. But the use of those properties has evolved, and it's gonna continue to evolve.
And the size of the equipment.
Yeah.
We were talking about.
Equipment has gotten larger.
Ditches and culverts and everything, and I made the comment at our meeting last night, you know, back when that culvert was put in in nineteen oh four. You know, back when that culvert was put in in nineteen oh four or nineteen sixty-nine, the equipment was much smaller. Well, now you're not going to take a several hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment across a little rickety, you know, culvert. You just, you can't do that, so.
We got a new truck, right?
Yep.
Hundred and seventeen thousand.
Well, for the truck, yeah.
For the truck, now we have to have it equipped.
Parts on it.
I was gonna say, that sure got cheap, a hundred and seventeen thousand.
That's just the.
I know.
Jassy.
And that was a twenty twenty-one budget item, I was surprised that we actually did.
Yeah, how did you get it? That's kind of funny that you got it, cause somebody else.
We're still trying to get. The ability to contract our twenty twenty-two truck, cause we're told the lead times are eighteen months plus right now. But they're having some trouble even getting us in line because there's shortages of what specifically, I don't know. But we'll see.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the, uh.
Agreement.
Correct.
Township maintenance agreement.
I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the township road maintenance agreement.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
You'll have to keep us posted after it gets out to the townships.
Yeah, let us know when you're gonna send it, we just, in case we get some calls.
Okay, I see no reason why it wouldn't be this weekend.
Yeah.
I'll start, um, I'll email it out and I'll probably mail it out to make sure everyone for sure gets a copy. And we'll see where that goes and it should take effect in twenty twenty-two, that's the way it's written.
Okay.
Item number two, uh, proof recruitment of two full-time heavy equipment operators, level B twenty-two. So as we've discussed, um, in the past, Meeker County relies very heavily on part-time operators to fill out our plow routes. Um, we use part-time operators somewhat to help us in the summer to help with mowing, try and fill out our, um, road crew. In the summer, it is more difficult to get part-timers, cause a lot of them do have other employment. We don't offer a full-time position to do that part-time work. So, snow and ice coverage, um, like I said, we rely heavily on part-timers, we have thirteen full-time heavy equipment operators. We operate about twenty, we operate twenty-five routes during a typical snow and ice event. So that means we've got twelve routes that have to be covered not by our full-time operators. And in addition to those thirteen, we use our sign technician, he has a route. We're gonna be using our new parks employee, he'll have a route and starting next year, ditch inspector will have a route. So that brings us down to nine that we rely on consistency, consistently. Um, it's been a challenge, uh, twenty-five pieces of equipment on the road during a snow and ice event, not common. Last year, we did have a couple actually where we had every, every unit on the road, which is great. Um, and the real challenge we have when we don't have all the units on the road is, everybody has an assigned route, they know their route. When somebody's missing, you can't just give everyone a mile and everybody around there and take that out. You end up having to, i- it's challenging to tweak things to cover that route, a lot of things in the route that's uncovered end up being end of the day. Um, so it really hurts that part of the county when we're short. And when I talk about those numbers, thirteen full-time operators, I'm assuming everyone's here that day for that event. Not sick, not sick kids, not a daycare problem, and that's not realistic either. So we really do have challenges filling out our snow and ice routes. Um, summer maintenance crew, we have a five-man crew, I put in the packet a detail of what most of our crew activities. Take as far as personnel, um, nine is kind of the magic number I look at for trying to safely compete, complete activities. We piece together crews, we shut down blades, bring operators out to help the crew, we have carlin goes out and flags. That's pretty common, actually, we'll sometimes be able to get some of our part-time mowers to come in and help us out by flagging. At times we do things we shouldn't, maybe cutting corners with safety flagger wise or things of that nature, I don't wanna be doing that, don't like to. But those are things we've tried to do just to try and get our work done and we're still falling behind with our pavement maintenance. One number I've cited before is with pavement maintenance, if you look at our county stated highway pave system. And assume it costs three hundred thousand dollars a mile to replace just the pavement, I'm not talking about shoulders or anything else. That's typically about a three hundred thousand dollar a mile project, that equates to about eighty million dollars worth of just pavement sitting out there. So every year you can extend the life of that pavement, when you work the numbers, it's about two hundred thousand dollars annually. And typically pavement maintenance, if you follow literature and studies that have been done, proper pavement maintenance will extend the life by three to ten years. And maybe even more, but at two hundred thousand dollars per year of savings, uh, per year of life extension on the pavement. We can't afford not to be doing the pavement maintenance, we can't afford to fall behind, that's my opinion. Um, so my initial request to the personnel committee was to add four heavy equipment operators, the rationale, bringing that five-man road crew up to a. Nine-man crew, we have less, far less challenges assembling that crew to get our crew work done. The personnel committee recommendation was to look at two new equipment operators in twenty-two, one in twenty-three and one in twenty-four.
I, I, I didn't think we said two, I thought we said one, one, but I guess we did. You sure?
Yep.
Is it one each year?
That is not true, I know that is not true, no, Danny, you know that's not true.
So it would be for a total of four new persons or two?
Did, do we have any retirements, were we?
Yes.
I'm trying to refresh my memory on this here.
I, I expect to have two or three retirements in the next two years.
And then we, I know we talked about raising the maintenance agreement would help pay for some of this. Because that was where I was getting the pressure on, you don't have enough drivers, you don't have enough operator.
And, and one thing I'll add to the conversation, um, not too long ago, we did a roll call on our part-time operators, see who's coming back, who's available. And we, we're losing four, maybe five. Now, our list includes twenty names, we're not losing five guys that come in every time, snow.
They don't come in, no, the, the issue was trying to find somebody to come in.
Yeah, some of our list includes guys that aren't available every storm, but, um. A few of the ones that can't come back are our reliable operators, just not the whole five.
And the parks worker will now is ready to drive the plow this winter?
He's got it comfortable with his route, but he has a CDL, yes.
And then John's gonna be driving too?
Next season, yes.
And this recruitment is for a start date of no earlier than January one, twenty twenty-two anyway.
That's the plan and that's why I'm here today, is I think this is the time of year to start advertising. We would hire it for twenty twenty-two, both positions, it's in the budget, so the budget you saw proposed from the highway department included a two percent. Levy increase, this cost was in there, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for two ditch law.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to move to approve the recruitment of two full-time heavy equipment operators.
Madam Chair, I'll second that.
Now Julie, if I can get you to vote no with me, this isn't gonna go through.
No pressure there.
No, no, I'm really, I'm really not.
And, and I was a little confused, I was thinking it was just going to be two, but it's two this year. One additional in two thousand twenty-three and another one in twenty-four. So there will be four new individuals within the next.
But we're only voting on two right now.
I'm only, yes, two for twenty twenty-two.
We can see what happens next year.
As with every new position, we'll evaluate it as part of the budget process in twenty-three and twenty-four.
Township could drop out or somebody cannot, you know, there's.
And then with the attrition from retirement.
Right.
Is going to have a big impact also.
Right, if we had to cut back in the future, we'd have opportunities to retirements and, and this will help as a transition tool as well. If we can.
Get bodies.
That was another one of my concerns was if people start retiring and we don't have anybody trained in, it's only gonna get worse, so.
Are we requir- requiring a CDL?
Yes.
For this, these positions, yeah?
That's the plan, um, we'll see what we get when we recruit, um, in the back of my mind, if we have to train, that's something I'm willing to do. But the way the job script is written, a CDL is required.
Is part of that.
I don't think this is a good time to find trained, but maybe, we'll see.
Yep.
Hopefully.
Maybe it's an advantage to help that person train, you know, as well.
Government jobs used to be, I mean, cherished, um, and, you know, even at the post office now they're crying for help. It's just, well, that's probably since Paul lived.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, that's a Paul.
That used to be a big deal to get in post office and. You'd rather be doing ditch law, three hundred, three hundred an hour, right?
Dealing with you folks?
Money-wise, I'm just talking financially, right?
No.
But this is a good time to recruit, cause if they've been traveling all over all summer for somebody and been away from home, this is an opportunity to work.
That, that's what I meant when I said this is a good time, I meant the season- seasonal, you know, the economy that, it's gonna be tough to find applicants, I think. But the people we typically have look at these jobs are contractors, construction folks looking to maybe. It's more time with their family, this gives them a set schedule rather than traveling the state or the region.
On the CDL thing though, you haven't, every heavy equipment operator hasn't had the CDL beforehand, so you've trained before though, haven't you, or not?
Not since I've been.
Okay, it's just the parks guy was.
Yep.
The first and then.
Parks we trained.
Gotcha.
And he was supposed to have it, but then nobody applied for that, so then we had to back off on that a little bit and say, well, he will get one, right?
That was a condition of employment.
I know, but they didn't work.
It would be, he would not be able to retain his job.
First it was, we're only hiring somebody that has a CDL and then that didn't happen, so.
And initially that was the intention, was we wanted to hire someone with a CDL.
Sometimes that's by design, sometimes it's not, just saying.
Well, we looked at that because if someone comes in with a CDL, you, you assume they've got some experience. They already know how to run some of this.
But that goes through personnel then, where you make a just, if he has no applicants and it's like, what may occur?
Yeah, and then it came before the board, just like Brandy's contract, you know, where that'll come, see how that goes. So, so tell me this, just out of curiosity, is it harder to train to run a grader or a plow?
I would say.
Cause I hear more about grading than I do about.
I, I'd say blade operators, they, it's more difficult to run a grader, I would say.
Is it?
I should ask an operator, cause they give the truth.
That's what I hear from people.
That's what I expect, um, blading a gravel road takes a little more touch.
Cause you will hear from township people say, well, so-and-so was on there and I could tell because of the, you know, and so.
It's, it's kind of an art and they gotta know the roads, because some s- spots are soft, but part-timers are.
They're not gonna know.
No, and snowblading though, I mean, how many times have you had accidents or the machine's been left in disarray because of that?
Well, that's something we've had happen, we've had, since I've been here, we told it to plow. Or somebody caught an edge and I mean it twisted.
Cause he just don't know the roads, part of it.
Familiarity with the route is very important to try and do your job effectively and safely. Um, and, and with the part-time operators, that's a challenge, we've got some that come in during every event and that's great, but some of them, we're rotating through. Depending on who's available.
I think last year some of it was road conditions and didn't we have a couple go off and then, cause of ice or.
Every, well.
Not being able to see or, you know, there's safety concerns, so if you're, if you're not, if you're an amateur, that doesn't, you know, if you're new at it, that doesn't help either. So safety has gotta be included.
Do you find that it, it is more happening with the new employees or is it the one who's accustomed to doing it and?
Driving off the road? It happens to everybody.
That was a very good.
I, i- it's just the nature of what we do, if we were just on our stated system, we'd have less trouble, but on the township system, it's a difficult system to cover. So guys who've done it for thirty, forty years, they can still drive off the road, they're in the dark, the road doesn't have tracks on it. They can't see any better than their eye, if we were on four tracks.
All right.
Call the question.
We have a motion, we have a second, call has been made, we will take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, this one should be done. Enjoy it.
Have you been on it?
It's amazing.
It's very nice, I was on it yesterday, it was really.
Big improvement, that road had some real ride.
Good job.
I had heard a comment, but, um.
Yes.
I had heard a comment and discussed with you, Phil, but I went for a ride down the road and I thought it was just excellent.
I was proud to be speeding.
Yeah, I agree. Are all the shoulders done though, are the shoulders, the shoulders aren't all done?
They should be.
They will be?
Yesterday they were finishing up the last little bit and grooming on the edge.
Okay, yeah, it, it rides nice.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Okay.
Do you wanna, we could do our five-minute break now?
We could.
Should we take our break, are you real anxious to, can, can we get up?
He doesn't have anything else to do during open enrollment.
If we could get.
That's government money, not ours. Didn't you ever hear everybody say that came from the federal government, okay?
Okay.
Who's that?
Guess who pays that too?
I hope they didn't get upset with me about, with the job thing, but I was frustrated during that whole, and it's not their fault, but. This isn't working.
What is the criteria?
They went down the hall.
Well.
I wasn't here, I don't know what they said.
They got a picture of you and then I saw they bought darts or something, or I don't know.
You're fortunate, you don't hire help, do you? Do you have higher people?
Be, uh, homegrown it all.
Good for you.
We went in the Legion on Saturday night, it's my wife's birthday, so we were gonna have a steak and we always gotten good steaks there. We brought a steaks, you were out of ribs.
Well, I'm out of ribs by design, they double in pound by price, I don't order anymore. And I'm redoing my menu and you're, when you see the prices, but I can't help it, I'm taking off some products, cause if you can get them, you can't afford them.
Yeah, it's crazy, that's what we've heard in other places, it's just.
Nuts.
And we're not, we're not getting any more for, I can tell you that, it's produce.
See, that'll teach you, you should have just had a burger.
I didn't want a burger.
Oh, have a German burger, they're wonderful.
Did they have steaks, have the money? I'm gonna have that next week.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
On Saturday night?
Friday or Saturday, I'll let you know, it's on Facebook.
Should we resume activities here? Are we back up and running, Cory?
We are, okay.
We're back up. Our next item on the agenda is Mikel.
Hi, I'm Mikel Johnson, human resources coordinator. Today, what I have for you is updating the personnel policies, so this is something that is just regularly done. To continue to maintain language that is clear as well as align with current employment trends. And as well as union contract language. So I have several updates that I brought forward today because it's nice to get them all done at once. Because the employees signed for these, uh, changes as well, so that they're aware of these changes as well. So the first portion is just general language changes. So I updated some of the definitions to get them closer to FLSA language and, um, things like that. And then I've also added a temporary working out of classification policy. So what that policy would do is if someone is taking over the majority of the duties for another position, generally. Um, like a supervisory role and it does have to be a certain number of steps above their own position. Then they would get a certain amount of, of increase during that time. Uh, I added the workplace accommodation of disabilities policy, that is one that is just something that is good to have in general. We are already are following the ADA compliance gen- uh, guidelines, so this is something that we've already been doing. We just didn't have a policy in place for it, so it's good to have that as a, as a policy in place. Uh, I updated the holiday language for part-time employees to include that. Uh, eligible part-time employees who are regularly scheduled to work thirty hours per week would be now, uh, eligible to receive holiday pay. Uh, this is something that I should have outlined in the RBA as far as a cost, because I, I did not, uh, include that. So I apologize for not including that, that this would be an additional cost. So there currently are two employees that we have identified that regularly work thirty hours a week. Or I'm sorry, regularly scheduled to work thirty hours a week and so they would be eligible then to, uh, receive holiday pay. Uh, the thought behind this is that these are professional level positions and they are, uh, working part-time. And that's somewhat a benefit to the county then, so it is nice for a retention tool as well. And that's somewhat a benefit to the county then, so it is nice for a retention tool as well for those employees. So the costs, if they were eligible for all eleven holidays, which. They might not be because it would be that they have to normally work that day, so if they did um, all eleven. The cost would be five thousand seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents if we did approve that piece of it.
So, quick question, is regularly scheduled, so that does mean they always work thirty hours a week or average thirty hours a week, or? Then they get it?
That would mean that the day fell on their regularly scheduled day, regardless of number of hours.
That, well, no, they would have to be regularly scheduled to work thirty, so.
Thirty, yes, yes.
That was my question, so it's thirty is the cap?
So, so someone who's like a part-time deputy would not be eligible for this?
So then if their thirty fell, thirty fell on a holiday, they would get, or they just get it anyway?
It has to be a day that if, it, they would normally work that day.
So like Labor Day or?
And the idea here is that they already are getting other benefits, health benefits, this is literally the only benefit that they aren't getting right now.
So, you, you said on number one, you said general language changes to make them more in line with FLSA.
Some of them are for FLSA, some of them are just general language changes in the definitions.
Cause we can't really be out of line with FLSA.
And, and we're not, it's more just that the language wasn't quite clear, so just making it more clear. Uh, then it was updating the holiday language to address when Christmas Eve and Christmas Day fall on a Friday and a Saturday. Um, that doesn't happen very often, so this is the first time that's happened in a while. And then there was a lot of questioning on how that worked as far as pay and observance. So this would just make the language more clear for both union and non-union employees. So how we are handling it this year is they're receiving pay for both holidays on Friday, Christmas Eve. Um, so they are receiving pay and they're observing Friday, Christmas Eve, but they're not getting additional days to observe since it's Friday and it's Saturday. So it's just updating that language to. For the future.
And they receive holiday pay, so what was it, Andrew was explaining to me, they'd get Friday off, but double pay. Instead of an additional day off, which would be that Monday, so everybody comes back to Monday. But, I see, I got it.
Any questions on that one? So then the next chunk is um, updating the sick and vacation payout policies to include good standing language. That is aligning with what our uh, contracts did this year as well, our union contracts, so updating that to include that language. Uh, added a personnel board of appeals policy, we were required to do that uh, to exit the merit system. So we are including that, that basically is a way for um, employees and applicants to. Address this board if they feel that they've been discriminated against. Uh, so we had to add that language, um, and that's also uh, per statute. Uh, updated the overtime and compensatory time policy to reflect FLSA guidelines, um, basically. Our policy said that for non-exempt, that they could get overtime for working both over eight hours a day. And over forty hours in a work week, uh, and we don't need to have both of those in the language. So it would be going to forty hours in a work week instead of both eight hours a day, over eight hours a day and over forty in a work week. Uh, it includes the previously approved telecommuting policy. And it also includes the previously approved catastrophic medical leave bank policy. Uh, so that policy, we are currently rolling out during open enrollment. Uh, we need to have enough employees to opt into that for it to uh, be sustained. So that we can have enough uh, hours in the bank. So right now we have forty-six that have opted in and sixty-seven that have opted out. Uh, we still have seventy-six employees that need to complete their open enrollment yet, so. It's still a little bit of a toss-up on whether this will, will have enough interest from employees. So in the events that we don't have enough interest, then I would be removing that from these policies.
The uh, telecommuting policy, does that change with COVID changing or not?
No, so the, the policy that you had approved earlier this year was a permanent telecommuting policy.
Okay.
So this is putting that language that was in that policy in the personnel policy.
And then uh, I removed forms that were included in the personnel policy that can be just given separately. They don't need to be included in the policy, there was like the wireless device policy, things like that. Um, those can be located elsewhere, they don't need to be within the policies. Uh, I updated the employee recognition policy to state that employees will receive recognition awards at the annual county picnic. If they're not able to make the picnic, if they'd like, they could request to have it at a board meeting, otherwise if they're not able to make it. Uh, we can just mail it to them as well. Uh, removed merit system references, so there was specific language in here regarding merit system employees. So now that we're no longer on the merit system, uh, we've removed that language. Added language regarding transfers during a probationary period, so this would limit the ability to transfer during a probationary period. Unless there was approval from department heads and then ultimately the county administrator as well.
And then would a new probationary period begin?
Yes.
That wouldn't continue on, so if they, what's our probationary period?
One year.
One year, okay. So if they were in month nine, you approve a transfer, they go back to day one, okay, good.
Uh, I added a personnel manual disclaimer, so that would be on the first page, basically that's reminding them that this is not a contract. There's been some recent case law out there that um, is really pushing for saying that more than once in the personnel policy. So we do have it in other areas, but it's just also reminding just upfront right away that this is, does not create a contract. Uh, that employees are still at will, uh, other than the union contract employees. Then it is adding language stating that the step anniversary dates will change upon a promotion or a demotion. There was some confusion about that piece of it, there was some discretionary um, things going on with it. So just updating that to have more of a clear process on how that's handled. And then updating the social media policy to include retention information, so there was some questions about how. The data that was placed onto social media pages was retained, and so uh, updating. How we're gonna be handling that process. Is that the last one, I think, yeah.
The social media policy. To include retention information. Explain that a little bit to me.
So what was added was uh, that we will archive social media posts made from a county department's social media account for six months.
Oh, alright, okay.
Not personal accounts.
Yeah, no, I, I'm thinking, wait a minute, okay, that's fine.
But certain departments can use social media to investigate, right, like, am I right?
Clarify what you were saying.
Investigations or something, police or you may look on social media, like Facebook or whatever to.
What about in the hiring process?
We're not supposed to do that, are we?
We're not, we should not be looking at an individual's social media, should we?
Correct, because then you are then possibly gaining protected information.
Okay, good.
Or protected class information.
No, no Googling, can you Google?
The person that's making the hiring.
I mean, I don't think, somebody told me I couldn't do that, she said right there.
The, the.
If you're on the hiring.
Yeah, if you're part of the hiring committee, you're not supposed to do that, but an outside person can do that work and then.
Pass it on to the hiring.
Back if there's anything that is of concern.
Interesting, but can, if you're just sitting at your desk, you can't go on Facebook here, can you?
Unless it's been opened up for specific business purposes. So yeah, the investiga- investigatory purposes, as you mentioned, um, also as this policy really covers, you know, certain departments have.
Like public health has Facebook, I think the highway department, I hope they use it more, I think they started one to kinda keep up on.
So on our computers, we could log into Facebook.
Not if you're on the network.
Okay.
Unless it's been opened up specifically for your.
I just wanted to be clear about that, because we always had a restriction on that, wherever I've ever been, so.
Yeah, yeah, except for those individuals who've been authorized to do it for business purposes.
Yeah.
Cool. So you're looking for a motion to approve this? Move to approve the updated Meeker County personnel policies, pretty straightforward.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
She takes the one with seven words.
I know, okay.
No acronyms.
I'm old, it's harder for me. Just had a birthday.
Just leave those chapters to Paul.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Personnel policies. Hearing none, we'll take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
How you doing on open enrollment?
We have seventy-six employees left, I have emailed out uh, the department heads who they are, so that they're able to talk with them.
And that has to be done by?
It has to be done by Friday, so they have a little time yet, but uh, there's just Patty and I, so I wanna make sure that we're trying to get people. Get people met with if they need to and get them done.
Well, well, we published the equi- heavy equipment operators this week then.
Yes.
The job description is ready.
Yes.
Okay.
Did reach out to me yesterday and say.
Get on the ball.
You're special, nobody reached out to me.
I called you. Left you a message.
Oh, I was gone all day, sorry. I only got a message from Andrew, I thought it was him both time.
Oh, yeah.
Apologize.
Oh, it's just Andrew.
Business day, I apologize, I'll, I'll call you.
Whenever you get a chance, that's fine, we'll get it done.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mikel. Speaking of Andrew, I believe Andrew's next.
Yes, um, I, I just received an uh, email from Joe Norman with uh. Soil and water, they had a couple more questions about this, and so I'm gonna ask that we table this item. Nothing that, nothing that is gonna, I don't think derail us completely, but I think they wanna get a couple things.
I talked to a couple people, cause I wanna know, and I, I think this, I come over to decide that this is probably a good idea, I just wonder, so. So we'll just table it till next time.
Yeah, we'll table it and then, let's not table it to a date certain, um, let's just table it.
At this time, Meeker County Attorney Brandy Sheafine is requesting a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Thirteen D point oh-five subdivision three parent B, attorney-client privileged to discuss pending litigation of Meeker County property. Specifically land dispute.
Okay, at this point, we'll close.
Sure.
Um, do you want me to pause it until I swap this out and then you can?
We're not, remember, we're not gonna record.
Oh, that's right, so I can just pause it?
We just need to pause everything.
And then I will leave.
To confirm that the sole discussion that the county board had was regarding the um. Pending litigation of Meeker County property, a land dispute, no other discussion happened while we were in a closed session. Besides that of the subject matter.
Alright, thank you Brandy, very good.
Since um, Brandy skipped my report, I can give a report, I have two items to report on. The first is uh, the Seville and Sibley property sale that we have going on. Uh, the due diligence for that continues, um, they came out yesterday and we're doing. They're continuing through that process.
Rolling along.
We are moving. Uh, the second item is that I spoke with Mary a little while earlier and. She confirmed that we are still on process to have our cut over for exchange, um, I think in all likelihood probably tomorrow. We're moving forward on that project as well, that concludes my report.
Just think, Brandy, tomorrow you can start using Outlook.
I can be the same as you, Mr. Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I will tell you this, I got the AIS. Uh, documents, but they did not come through, they sat in group wise, they did not come through on Outlook, which was.
I can't get in group wise, so.
Yeah, we still, we have a, she called it VPN is hard down, so.
Whatever.
That's the problem, I asked if we have an ETA on that. They're working on it.
Have a quick question, they want us to attend this?
Yes, and then that same invitation is going out to all the other elected officials across the county.
Oh, so supervisors and, okay, cities and.
So this is something we need to put on our agenda.
If we can.
On our personal, personal calendar.
I feel like I have something else going on. Why don't you get an electronic calendar?
Why?
I don't know.
I like this.
I do too, it's nice, I wish I had one, yeah.
Paul, Outlook has a calendar.
I know, I'm, I'm the same as Paul, I like.
And I suppose we're gonna have to share them to some degree.
To some degree.
I mean, you know, otherwise it's worthless of having it if we're not sharing calendars, so I can look and say, yeah, you got an open spot, you told me you couldn't meet me, why?
Let's not do that.
We are recording.
I'm gonna stick with my paper copy. Alright, well, as we move down the uh, agenda, commissioner committee reports. I'm just gonna start, I've got mine ready to roll, Pioneer Land Library meeting was held Thursday, the twenty-first. Eighteen people were present, I, some interesting, there are nine counties in the Pioneer Land system, thirty-two libraries. Four of those libraries are in Meeker County, Litchfield Grove City, Cosmos and Dassel. And all four are considered city libraries, but city and county funds support them. They're working on the budget now for twenty twenty-two. Um, the majority of the Pioneer Land system has not asked for increased funding since two thousand and nine. They're, they're tight with their money, um, funding from Meeker County has not increased in four years. The director's contract was renewed with a one-step increase. Uh, the whole system decided to drop any fines for juveniles, it was waived to encourage that age bracket. To continue using the library, checking out materials. Health insurance with their new two-year contract went up nine percent, that was a big jump. Uh, the projected budget for um, Pioneer Land was four point seven million. One point five million of that is provided by the nine counties within the system. The remainder comes from cities, state funds, grants, fees. Uh, the request from Meeker County comes to around ninety-six hundred for the twenty-two budget. And that involves a, quite an increase in these cost areas, salaries, insurance. The cost of books and supplies, the cost of some new equipment, and of course, we here have experienced all of those along with technology fee. Cost of technology contracts, all of that has gone up, so that's why at this point now. Public library is asking for some funds from us, the next meeting will be in January. I attended a meeting last night, November first, we had that in Dassel, it was ditch fifteen meeting. Felt it went very well, it was held at the History Center, beautiful facility over there in Dassel. Um, a number of folks from the community attended. Um, Steve, Danny, Paul and I were there, Barb Locke was with us, Andrew was with us. Um, we had an informational meeting and more on that topic will be coming. This afternoon I have an extension meeting at one thirty, the Fairgrounds. Wednesday I have an aquatic invasive species meeting at two o'clock right here. Um, Monday the eighth, we have another ditch meeting and it is optional for commissioners to attend, but. Highly suggested. Wednesday the tenth, there's going to be the tri-county public health meeting and on November seventeenth. We'll have another ditch meeting for ditches seventeen and nineteen, and that is mandatory for commissioners to attend that one. That conducts my, concludes my report, who'd like to go next?
I'll go next, I don't have any. I had no committees except for the ditch.
Why is that?
You were there last night.
I don't know, I, probably cause I was a little self for a little bit of it, so. But uh, otherwise, the other committees I had was before, and I think it's obsolete already, I think I had Woodland Centers and IT, I'm sure you guys covered that. I'm sure you guys covered that.
And you were there last night and you're coming this afternoon, so you got a meeting coming up.
Yep.
So I, I had a CHB Finance meeting. Most of the stuff right now, you're going over the COLA and the picking insurance and policies. Had some budget discussion that's gonna come before the regular board. The, uh, increase is gonna be one and a half, up to five percent. Uh, Kaiser will have some discretion on that. Talked about the local public health grant, um, and of course discussing the delegation agreement as we go along here. Then I had a shelter meeting last week. Um, that was pretty, we're looking for a representative to serve on the board, a citizen. Preferably from Meeker if we can, I think. Do you have it on the website?
I do have it on the website.
You know, anybody's interested, sure have them call. The Save Our Tales, I think they're gonna do online again this year. It went well last year and because of COVID still being out there, it's a nice event to have, but they've decided to wait another year. Meeker hasn't been able to do any fundraising either. Talked about the budget a bit. Uh, they'll be meeting on that and I think that's about it. And then yesterday I had, uh, Supporting Hands where we talked about passing the budget. Same thing, uh, the COLAs for the employees. They did make, they did, and this has been a, uh, topic of conversation that's been kind of split between the board. They wanted to offer five hundred dollars to any employee that doesn't take health insurance. And, uh, it passed unanimously yesterday. They have, but it can only be used pre-tax. So they have to use it for daycare, health, savings dental, something like that.
HSA, Health Savings.
There's some different, but it has to be a pre-tax deduction. In other words, it's not gonna be a W two. It's not gonna be an extra five hundred dollars. And we've been discussing that for a couple of years, so it was a little bit, you save money in the long run because they're not taking it. But we have an obligation to make sure that everyone has health insurance. So, and then in the interest of fairness, if your husband has it and you're getting it there, how's it fare? So it did pass. We'll see how it goes. It kinda, um, they're doing well with grants and stuff. The county contribution is gonna go down about a hundred thousand dollars again. So I think our share of that will be about forty-seven hundred dollars. Nationals sent down, um, they, uh, an email last week, I believe, that they wanna mandate vaccinations for all the Supporting Hands employees. And so the exec board is meeting, um, there's, that's certainly split. We don't know how many, we don't know how many people that involves, but we don't wanna lose employees either. So on one hand, you have HIPAA where you can't ask them. And then on the other hand, they're telling you, find out if your employees. So, and that's another thing that's very split on this board, so it's gonna be an interesting conversation, but it's coming before every board I'm on, so. And then we had our, uh, meeting Friday of, for facilities improvement and that was just pretty basic. Our enthusiasm is kinda tapped down because I think we need to move forward. Brandy and I agree. I think on this that, you know, we've talked about this for so long. So they're gonna move ahead. I think Andrew's stepping in here if you want to. We're gonna do some work sessions to keep the whole board informed of what's going on. But I think the main thing is some insurance that we're gonna do something. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
That was kind of the, I mean, we, we know what we have to do basically here. There's a couple decisions to make and then decide what we're gonna do over there.
The, the first step is verifying the, the space needs.
Right.
They don't wanna go back to what was done four years ago and just say this is still the same.
Start at square one, yeah.
So we're gonna, um, look at the surveys from a couple of years ago, confirm those with departments. And then that's gonna be the, the first step to move us along in the process. We have, I think, based on the discussions that we've had as a board, um, we have a really good idea of where we wanna go. There are some outstanding items that need to be addressed, which is why we're doing this process. Uh, and once those items are confirmed, then we'll be able to, um, you know, come back and get a, a final plan approved that can then be turned around and created into construction documents and then ultimately constructed.
I think what I noticed, like I said at the table, was just some fatigue about, we're not all gonna start back at square one again. Cause we had so many meetings and went so many places, so. My idea is I hope we can get an idea of money, what we wanna spend and then how we're gonna get there and then go from there. One other interesting thing I learned yesterday at Supporting Hands was, you know, they, first time births, if you qualify, uh, um, a public health nurse comes in and helps you for two years with that child. And, and there's been a lot of studies done where it, you know, mental health is better. Uh, the outcomes have been wonderful, so, so it's very well-funded. So they met with Prime West and Prime West has actually looked back at their people that have used Supporting Hands and they see a difference in what they need for mental health care and different things. So they're gonna start maybe providing more to Supporting Hands because they're seeing, they're seeing how well it's working out. Forty percent of the people that are on this program are MA people. And it would be an interesting.
What's that?
Supporting Hands Nurse Partnership.
A what?
They're on ME.
What's the ME?
Medical assistance.
Okay.
And I would hope that some work session, we could have a presentation because there's, it, this is so evidence-based and it's working out so well. It's just, it's expensive, but they're seeing the results down the line for years now because it's been around long enough. That the kids are doing better in school. There's, people are staying married or keeping a job or, you know, there's just a lot of things that are wor- it's preventive care that I think really works. So it would be an interesting, uh, presentation. So forty percent of the people that are on it are MA, but if you look back, they get off it eventually after they get, so. It's one of them things. So that's what I have.
Um, we'll start out AMC, um, last Monday. That was interesting, you know, you hear from other counties. I thought, I, I jotted this down as each county gave their report. I thought you might find this interesting. Proposed, uh, our preliminary levies, Benton County, five point three, Chicago, Shis- Chicago. Five point six, Isanti, seven point three seven, Malax, twenty-four point five.
Yeah, wow, that's a whole nother.
Morrison County at two point oh six, Sherburne, four point nine five, Stearns, four point two five, and Wright at five point seven five. So we look really good, um, compared to those counties and what they're gonna have for levies. The other thing they talked a lot about was the opioid settlement, which, um, you know, they're gonna come down to this really short window that we're gonna have to either sign on. We did kind of hear a preliminary number, dollar number for our county, but that will be spread over, is it eighteen years?
What are they advising regarding whether it's gonna go in the Attorney General's Fund or directly to the county's fund?
Well, they wanted to go directly to the county.
Is that the AMC's position?
Yeah.
That kind of brings back the tobacco suit, how that all ended up. That didn't end up as I hoped it would, but. So I have a question on these levies. Are they, are, are they using rescue money for other things being there?
Yeah, some of the other counties are, are not using any of their rescue money except on projects that they wouldn't otherwise have funded.
Like broadband or?
Childcare.
Childcare.
Broadband, what an issue that is. Oh my gosh. You know, we are so lucky and, and so thankful for Meeker Cooperative and what they did for us. Um, they took us out of that market, you know?
And I think Stearns and Wright, they al- Wright always has a pretty big, I mean, they're always building and doing things, aren't they?
Yeah, I felt like five percent's pretty good for Wright.
That's what I was gonna say. They probably think that's low.
But you know, when you think about their growth.
Exactly.
I mean, they're the, are they not, correct me if I'm wrong, not the second fastest growing county?
I won't correct you because I don't know, but they are fast growing.
He said something like that. I think they're second. It's just new house after new home, their tax base is just growing, growing, growing.
Location, location, location.
That's right.
The other thing we heard a lot about at that meeting was, um, the difficulty in hiring, um, deputies and in the Emergency Services Department. We're not the only ones that are struggling in that area and what the fix is gonna be, nobody seems to really have a handle on it.
I think they're just gonna let all the criminals loose from what I've heard. That's just the new way to do it.
Not Meeker.
Well, I don't know. In California, if you don't shoplift over five hundred dollars, you, they don't arrest you. They had some people in there with a calculator filling up bags. I'm not lying, it was on, it's like.
We're a far cry from California than Meeker is.
Well. Lucky East.
Uh, then I had a Pro Works meeting. One of the things, the big issue there is, um, you know, when you look at, the really great work those folks do, we start folks at the minimum wage, ten dollars in some sense an hour. Well, really, really, really difficult to attract. So we have some money right now and of course, you know, the, the immediate thing was let's raise everybody's salary. Well, that's a dangerous thing to do too, because then the next thing, you know, three years down the road, you're gonna have anyone that left. So, um, I think what we're gonna do is look into somebody, um, who can look at our finances and say, here's what we can afford to do. Here's a recommendation because we've got salaries that just span the range, so. You know, alright, so fine, give everybody a twenty-five cent bump. Well, alright, does that make sense too? So.
No, their director just retired, right?
He will on, uh, December thirty-first.
And a new person has taken over or will?
No. We have one lined up.
Okay.
So, um, she's an internal, um, promotion.
Candidate? Oh, okay.
Well, I think McDonald's some, is playing, paying fourteen, fifteen and sixteen dollars in certain areas, but I don't know. You know, this is just something now, but every board is talking about the same thing, but how much money can you throw at somebody? Cause where is it gonna be in two, two years or three years or, right? That's the issue. I don't know where we're going. And I don't know if money's the only issue either, so.
But it's, it's a, you know, same conversation everybody's having. It's just very difficult when you see, it's hard to even think of ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
That's pretty bad.
Those folks are.
That's the minimum wage.
Then I had a UCAP meeting. Um, in this one, we spent the vast majority time discussing health insurance because the employees at UCAP's share is going up thirty-eight percent.
Oh, goodness.
So, um, if you can imagine what that's gonna do to their paychecks.
What did they have it with?
I can't remember the name of the company because it didn't seem like.
Wasn't anything you were familiar with?
We had done enough comparison.
That's what you need to do.
So had they brought anybody and done any comparison? Um, they pretty much relied on, um, the providers to give them a good product. And so it kinda got caught behind the eight ball as far as time goes. So, um, at least for this year, they're gonna spend another year paying thirty-eight percent.
That is unacceptable.
Yeah, I, you know, you take, you know, thirty-eight percent as much, but let's say thirty-eight percent out of what you're paying on the, on the county portion of yours going up, it's that much less in the paycheck. It would be huge. And UCAP also was taking a hit, so they were taking part of the percentage too. So I'm, I, I said, well, what did this really go up?
Yeah.
And it's closer to fifty-six percent.
Oh, there's something.
Why? There's some.
I'd be, I'd be doing some investigation there.
I'd say, thanks, we're looking.
It had everybody's attention as we discussed that.
I bet.
That was primarily what we, we talked about that night, so I look for us to be looking for a new company.
Yep.
Cause every board that I, you know, that I look like, CHB, they looked at it. The one we had went up three percent or something. Another one, four. I haven't heard anything in double, I haven't heard anything in double figures.
No.
Yeah, Pete was around nine.
Yeah, that was high for them.
Yeah, that's been two years row, they've been around nine, but.
They've taken on more people than they used to that aren't as healthy, but, yeah. I don't know, I think they better.
Well, they are, believe me, cause the question was to Deb, well, how are the employees gonna accept this? Well, I don't know. I got an idea though, don't you? Cause they're not gonna be happy.
They can go on the exchange for unaffordable ins- insurance reasons probably.
So. But that was it.
That's it.
Yes, we have AIS, don't we? And we had a meeting last night.
A meeting last night? Extension this afternoon and AIS tomorrow. Anything else need to come before this board today? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
May I hear a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Let's take the vote. Shall we adjourn? Yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Nope, okay. Meeting is closed. Adjourn.